Okay, I'd like to call Lemstar Planning Board meeting for October 16th, 2017 to order.
Actually, I think those are the meeting minutes.
Last minute, I have to roll the dates.
It's November 6th.
Yeah, November 6th. I'm reading the wrong thing, I said, wait a minute, that's wrong. Okay, 6:30. We have a public hearing, City Council petition, 1118 Committee on Ordinance Review, amend Chapter 22 of the revised ordinance entitled zoning by amending Section 2214, adoption and amendment, to require notification of a butters zoning changes and the costs associated will be paid by the petitioner, planning board recommendation. Do we have anybody from the City Council?
No.
Any proponents of this? Okay. I did go through it. Just had it. And... It doesn't seem like there's that, you know, I was trying to tell... They show the only... When I was going in here... They get comment A1. I was trying to tell where the changes were. It says, "The council..." and it says, "At the time of filing such applications, such fee as be required by the city clerk for costs associated with advertising and all that is herein, the City Council shall within 14 days of such zoning orders, submit such to the planning board for review." I don't see where in... And that's what, we accept that. But what it said here was, they wanted adoption amendment to require notification of a butters.
It's farther down, John. They put it, all the sort of grayed out language, I believe, is additional text. And then the black is what's existing.
Okay.
So they get into more detail down at 14.3 about who exactly they're targeting for this. If it's... If the petitioner is seeking to amend the zoning map in a manner which changes the designation of one or more individual parcels, as opposed to a global zoning change for, you know, that would account for the whole city. If it's a very specific area...
Okay.
They shall be required to submit a certified a butters list, similar to they would do for a special permit, for the area proposed for the rezoning. And then it goes on with a little bit more detail below that about how that, those mailings and advertising would happen.
Yeah, okay, that's standard. From other zoning.
I guess this is...
Yeah.
This is what I heard.
That's what I was sort of questioning, evidently had been left out. For zoning changes, I know for our standard change, if somebody's coming in for a special permit...
That's, yeah, for a special permit.
That's the procedure.
Right.
And that's the costs.
For a special permit, yeah.
And that's how for a special permit. Evidently, they had been left out when they made zoning changes.
Yeah, that same process is not part of the City Council's process for the zoning change, yeah.
Right, right. So that's what I understood.
For those specific kinds of changes, yeah.
And that's why I was just looking for a clarification. So basically, what they've done is they've taken our procedure for special permit and added it to a zoning change. And it's 300 feet from the proposed zoning change to the butters in that area.
Yes, that is the same a butters distance that we require.
Okay. Fine, that's the way I understood it. Wanted to clarify, I was hoping I had somebody here from the City Council, but...
Yeah, we did let them know that the public hearing was tonight. Obviously tomorrow is Election Day and... May be busy, but if you wanted to invite someone to another, you know, if you wanted to continue...
No, I don't think it's... When I looked at it, and I looked at it as a standard thing that we have for special permit, so I was just looking to see if they had done something special. Okay, and what about the rest of the amendments?
I thought it was, I thought it was, it cleaned up the section and it made sense. I don't have, I didn't have any other comments. And I wouldn't change anything.
Very straightforward.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? My only question, and I did speak with the Mr. Scott Clark about this. Under the Section F, because often where the petitioner? This board? And any expenses relating to a butters' mailings and stuff? I don't really have a provision for that. So under Section F, it's at the top of, I guess that's the fourth page. It says, "When the petitioner is a public entity, such notification procedures may be satisfied by other means acceptable to the City Council." My question was, you know, what are your thoughts on what those acceptable means are? They weren't really sure, yet.
Well, why don't, well, you bring up a good point, because I was actually going to bring that up in terms of the costs. So why can't... Can we make the request that where the petitioner is a public entity, such notification procedures may be waived by the City Council or by the city clerk's office?
Make that suggestion.
I mean, I don't, "may be satisfied by other means" is a little broad. So why can't they just be waived?
So where the petitioner, they wouldn't do this process? Or they, or they wouldn't do that?
Well, the petitioner, like, say, was like...
Well, I think we'd still have to, don't you think we should still notify the butters?
We still should notify the butters.
I'm talking about the fees, because what are we going to be paying ourselves?
Yeah, we're gonna pay them.
Paying the, you're gonna, it's gonna come out of your budget and go into a different budget?
There's advertising, and then there's the mailings, and there's costs associated with those. So when we send, when we do a butters' list or something for a special permit, there's an application fee for the special permit that covers the advertising, then they also provide the mailing materials, stamps, envelopes.
But we're talking about, we create, like, I create a, or the board creates a petition.
Yep.
Who's gonna pay for that? And that's what, that's what we mean.
Well, that's my question, yeah.
Okay, the city is gonna pay itself?
At the same time, when where the petitioner, I don't... What they're talking about is very specific zoning in certain areas. I think a good example is the one on Central and Grand Street, where they're putting the gas station in the Dunkin' Donuts. That was a specific, you know, targeting a few parcels. I don't know how often we have those kind of petitions. Ours are off into the language of the zoning as a whole, or, you know, ordinances and that sort of thing. So you could look at it like that, that we would rarely be the petitioner in that kind of case. But, because usually it's someone who, in that case, the petitioner was the applicant for the project. You know, because they needed, they needed that.
In some cases, somebody would come to, typically, let's say we found an issue where we wanted to change an area from... Mix it from MU1 to MU2, or from industrial to MU1. Okay? That encompasses a large area.
Right, and what scale? I mean, if you have thousands of butters, you know, there's like a cross.
And if you would ever do that, that, that's where I, you know, the city... That would require the city to take and notify all the butters, you know, and that could encompass, you know, a large area.
Yeah, this does say one or more individual parcels when the change in the designation affects one or more individual parcels. Doesn't say a whole zone.
A parcel could be a whole big area.
So I, like Carol saying, I think if we keep, you know, such notification procedures may be waived instead of shall be waived, at least that leaves it open for...
Maybe.
And maybe, it doesn't necessarily have to be, like, maybe waived.
Well, I think it shall be waived, I think, you know, that's the difference. Because you wouldn't require the planning board, it'd have to come out of the city treasury somehow. Especially if we initiated it.
So then the notification procedures wouldn't be waived? You're saying we still need to notify?
You still notify, it's just how we pay it. The cost related to it, what we're saying...
How do we waive them when we have to pay the Sentinel Enterprise of Publication?
They can't, the money has to come from someplace. So how do we access that?
Why don't we just leave it as a question and ask them how that's going to be executed, implemented or executed when the time comes?
Okay.
Because if a large parcel, if it's initiated by the planning board, or even by the City Council. Okay, so they get a petition, the City Council is, themselves come up with a, they want to change it.
It could be 100 different butters.
Oh, yeah, it could add up with the posted and the advertising.
It could add up, it could be significant.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, I don't have a problem. What they did is the procedure, that pretty much follows the same procedure we have today with special permits. But a special permit is usually a segment of one parcel. Okay? We have a request today, a request from a developer who wants to change a parcel of a road today with industrial to MU1. In that case, that'd probably stretch a piece of property, because you couldn't do just the one piece of property. You would have to do that, because then that would be spot zoning. So then you would have to do that whole piece of, that whole length of probably a quarter of a mile on that road. Okay? Then that would be a significant, significant change. And that would be, if that's gonna be initiated by, now, we had a developer come to us or an engineer come to us, would they would be responsible for that whole thing? Okay, because you couldn't do just one...
In this case, yeah, in this case.
Because you couldn't do just one parcel, because that would be spot zoning.
I think it depends on the...
Yeah.
The situation where it is. Like the one on Central and Grand Street.
That was actually, that was two parcels.
Yeah, but the commercial zone was right there, but they didn't stretch it to cover those... It was three, you're right, it was a lot.
So three zones, yeah, it was a three, okay.
Too small, and then the large one on the corner. So they extended that boundary to cover those three parcels. But they were extending an existing commercial zone north of Grand Street. So they, and that, if it fit into here, they would take all three of those parcels, get to 300-foot butters radius, and then there's your list.
But that was like one large parcel in one section.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm saying covering 300 feet on the other side. Okay, and the front edge roughly. Over here, you're talking about 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
Or more, maybe 1,500.
Maybe, they need to define that.
So first, I think the first part that we look at is that that we should change that to shall. Okay? And should be, you know, paid by a, as a public entity.
So did we want to ask the question of how they would, you know, to get more specific language in there?
Yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So our two points is, the payment for ourselves was like the entity being the planning board or the City Council. Okay? And the second part was, how does this cover large parcels?
Okay.
Okay? Land. Because that, you know, conceivably, like, we did the rezoning for the city, that would meant that every household in the city, when they did the rezoning, would have had to take and gotten a written notification. Okay? Because we did the whole city.
Yeah.
So what we see here is, it doesn't define, okay, the size or the city. Like, you know, we know that's gonna happen, it'll happen every 20 years, that we're gonna rezone, we're gonna look as the city grows. We have to change things. So now you're looking at...
But this is still saying, if a petitioner comes in other than us...
Other than us, that's...
Then they pay.
But, that's right, like in that corner on 31st Street.
And that probably has to come out of our budget, right?
Well, that's, I mean, we don't have a budget for that.
We don't have a budget for that. So that would preclude us from being able to do it.
We could, we could create a budget for it in future years, but we don't have anything right now to give a budget for.
Well, like I said, you know, we created a lot of, most of the zoning, we initiated the changes for the citywide zoning.
Yeah.
Would that, you know, that would have meant that we would have to send a notification to every person.
I think they're talking about, it does say one or more parcels, but yeah, it brings that up, like, what happened, what did we do?
You gotta be identified.
So I say we just, that's the one question we have for the City Council. That, so, well, we have to close the hearing unless City of T A wants to...
Because we have to write a, we're supposed, we're being asked for a recommendation.
Yeah, so, but we have to do that under new business when we get there.
Okay.
So I'd make, unless there's someone else who has anything to speak, so...
I don't have anything else.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
You don't want to leave it open until we get an answer to the question?
No, because I think we, I think we can make a recommendation to approve it with just, with just a clarification of Section F.
Right.
I'm ready to move on, but I do have one other question though. Is this, is this entire, is this entire proposed ordinance brand new? Because some of it's in bold and some of it isn't.
I think, from what I'm prepared here in the book. So 14-1 and 2 are in here. And then starting in 14-3, which is a little bit gray, I think that's there.
Well, see, so F is already, F is already there, is my point, is it?
No, no.
It's not?
No, and I can see these are grayed out, so they changed the numbers, so this is now 14.5.
So the gray part is the new part and the bold part is the existing part?
I think so.
Which is weird, but all right.
14.5 here is 14.3 here, so they stuck in an extra section or something.
Yeah, so just ask them if they could, I think it's just too broad.
I think that's what they did, when they did it, they did it in red.
Probably, and for now it's all was gray.
And ours, it's covered in gray.
All right, so the bold is, is already existing and then the gray is...
Existing, yeah.
All right. So that's, so anyway, but I make a motion to close the hearing, and we'll vote on it under five.
Motion made, do I have a second or not? Second by Tom?
Do you have to open it to the audience?
Any further, oh, yeah, go open it to the audience, forget about that, sorry. Do I have any comments from the audience? I'll ask one more time, do I have any comments from the audience? Here none, now call for the vocal, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Okay. Open public meeting for 269 Crawford Street for site plan approval.
So, I am Marsha here, on behalf of Guido's Removal Services. I personally am Crawford Street, I promise to give me an idea.
Abner?
Guido's not here, that one couldn't forget. Manager with Guido's, and we worked on it to develop this plan. So I don't know if you're familiar with the site. It was purchased and developed by Guido a couple of years ago. Before that, it was a condemned structure. It was totally condemned, and I actually brought kind of before and afters, if anybody cares to see them, what it was and what it looked like. Just pass around. And I was contacted back in, that was September, so... The current use right now is for Guido's dumpster service.
Oh, picture.
There's a, two structures on the property. One here in the front, which contains the two-story. Top floor is the office for Guido's, and the downstairs is vacant currently. The structure in the back of the property is a garage, and that's where, currently, that's where they do maintenance on vehicles and dumpsters, and things like that for the operations of their business. Back in August, Guido came to the building department to see if he could get a license for the used car sales so we could open an office out of the downstairs of the building. And he got his own determination from Peter Nile, where they... He approved the use. And after that is when Abner came to me to see if I could put a striping plan together so we could show where we could locate vehicles on the lot. So just wanted to be clear about this before you tonight, is we're not doing any site work, we're not doing any new development, new buildings. We're purely just putting pavement down on the ground to stripe the existing pavement that's around the building to locate areas where we can designate car storage for the used car sales. In addition to that, we did add some landscaping around the perimeter. Right now, there's dumpster store in the back, back on the side. So, and along the perimeter, this is the current edge of pavement, you can see. So the hatched areas are on the side of where we're showing it. It's pretty slumped and it's minimal, there's not a lot. So we are showing vegetation of trees and shrubs and just mulching of those areas. Guido also owns the property in Sterling, so for queuing of dumpsters and things like that, they're still gonna continue to operate Guido's out of the upper floor. But for dumpster storage, and depending on how many vehicles they bring here, they'll be using offsite locations, dumpster storage locations. So it won't both be completely trammed on this one property. We submitted these plans to Lemstar. I did get a couple of comments back. I provided that via email today, I was waiting to hear that, because it was from Pittsburgh. So apologize for getting the comments back later, I'm not sure if you had a chance to print anything out.
I did, I didn't print them out, I probably...
Responsive comment here.
Cast them down.
So, we were issued a comment letter from Building Department, Fire Department, Police, Board of Health, Conservation and DPW dated October 25th. Board of Health and DPW are the only two who offered any comments. Conservation, Building, Police and Fire had no comments. The first comment came from DPW, asking us to check what City of Pittsburgh for street access requires. So, currently, right here, in front of the building, is a brick walkway. And in front of that brick walkway is where, it's not striped right now, but that's where everybody parks who works on the facility. So right along the front is here. You notice here, the City of Lemstar and Pittsburgh's town line is pretty much exactly 18 feet off of that. So you've got a four-foot walk and 18-foot parking area. You've got the town line, and you have another 16 feet before you get to Crawford Street the right way.
Yeah, it's all paved.
It's all paved. If you look at the pictures, you can see the improvement that was done a couple of years ago when they purchased the property. And a lot of work was done at that time in conjunction with City of Pittsburgh. There was a big flooding problem out in front here. There wasn't proper sewer and water connection to the building, so at the time, they did have new water and sewer brought to the building, which is a sewer pump station right on the side right here, and it runs out in the street and comes all the way up, up close to the area of sales, trailer sales. So it did significant improvement to bring water and sewer to the property. So, after we received these comments, I started having communications with Mike O'Hara and Gary Vellacqua at City of Pittsburgh. And I was trying to get something back, at least in writing from them today. Mike O'Hara's been on vacation. And as of last Friday, end of day, when I spoke with them, they understand the use, they understand we're not doing anything new. This is where everyone parks, but they were a little bit uncomfortable with traffic queuing, people pulling in and out of these front spaces. So we discussed with them, well, if we eliminated these spaces, we didn't strike them, we just showed an area, which is on a plan I provided today. So again, we're not doing any site work, we're not cutting anything up. The same area that's in there before, with the exception of the handicap space, is the only place on this property that can accommodate ADA requirements. And the office door is right here, so it's right, pretty much where the ADA space should be. Just show a spot here, it's just proposed parking here, used vehicle inventory. So this could be where they queue and they stack the cars that they're gonna be selling, as opposed to public being able to pull it out.
I went by there today, and that whole front was all filled with cars.
Yes.
Where are those cars gonna go?
That's where, well, we showed, we showed in total, there's 22 parking spaces around the perimeter of the site, and out in back. So, depending on where, or the quantity of cars that they buy, there are 22 available parking spaces on the property.
But most of those are taken out by trucks.
Well, that's what I'm saying, with, they're just starting their business.
Yeah.
So they have their Sterling property for queuing and storage of dumpsters and dumpster trucks and all that. So, I mean, this isn't gonna be open on day one, it's a full used car lot from front to back, it's...
Oh, right, it would have to be limited to a specific four or five spots.
In here?
Six spots, I mean, how many, how many are you gonna go for your license for? Used cars?
Originally, we had 22 spots right now marked on the, on the plan.
Yeah.
Basically, with the trucks, I know it's being, majority of the space in the back now is being utilized by the trucks. The thing is, we're not utilizing the site. Obviously, the phones are ringing for the dumpsters, and this is what we do, and this is what we've been doing. But we can always, our plan is actually move the dumpster operation, the vehicles, to Sterling, we have four acres in Sterling, that where we, you know, we storage the dumpsters, and that's where we're gonna give the trucks to as well. So this is pretty much, we're just gonna convert that to a whole...
So most of your rolling stock is gonna go to Sterling?
All the trucks is gonna go to Sterling.
All the trucks and trailers, so there won't be... So that leaves the rest of the...
Exactly.
It is, it is.
Well, you can't have, you have to have some, you have to have some employee parking also. How many people you, you know, because usually we, see, usually we allocate parking by the square footage of the building.
Okay. And right now, we have...
So we have to define that anyway.
All of the drivers are there in the morning, and they pick up their trucks and they park their cars there now.
Right.
This is not gonna be the case if, you know, pretty much it's gonna be like one, you know, the office lady, myself there, which is gonna oversee the car dealer. And all the drivers, they're gonna be going to Sterling, where they're gonna pick up their trucks and start their day, and they're gonna, you know, park their vehicles there, you know, since they're not gonna be coming to this location.
And what's your timeframe for this Sterling move?
For the Sterling move, you know, we own the land there, so pretty much if we're ready for the car lot, you know, as soon as that starts, we can, you tell the guys, you know, instead of coming to, coming here, go to Sterling and park, you know, keep the trucks there.
Do you have a building in Sterling?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a building in Sterling?
We know, it's a lot, it's a vacant, yeah, right.
So you're gonna have to go through the planning board in Sterling?
But you're still gonna need this property to service this stuff, right?
The garage is there now, just as small and stuff, yeah, because we can't really park the big trucks inside it, you know. You guys are probably familiar with the area. It's, what we're trying to do, we're trying to make good use of this piece of property, you know. It's gray for us, but it's a small for our car and business. So, you know, Guido and I, we thought of the car dealer. We have experience in, you know, in auctions and stuff like that for the equipment we buy. And, you know, we figured, you know, that was gonna be a good opportunity for us to make good use of that place. And of the, all the, you know, fix-up and everything we've done.
We did do a capitation, we did, on the square footage, so... So it's a 1,440 square feet of office space.
Okay.
Utilizing the 400 square feet of space, you know, only required, total of 341, so four spaces.
Four spaces.
So four spaces for the office would be required, which, as I said, show in 22 spaces.
Of course, you handicap. That's five. Okay. Well, and you know that there are gonna be some, if they get to the garage here, you'll always have a couple of trucks there, in the back.
There can be, it's a matter of them moving and queuing, moving cars around to fit their needs. You know, it's a small garage, it's not a full...
Yeah, we can't fit the trucks there.
You can fit the small vehicles and cars, it's not a truck that you can service.
You know the, you know the facility.
Now, as far as this is concerned, the, we always, this is backing out all these cars, back out of the Crawford Street.
So currently, yes, the way, there's, like I said, there's 16 feet between the edge of travelway... So currently, yes, the way, there's, like I said, there's 16 feet between the edge of travelway.
Right.
The property line, which is the back of the parking space in your feet. So 16 feet is pretty adequate turning movement. But that's what, so I'm comfortable.
18 is standard.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of room up there. But that's why Mike O'Hara and we discussed, this could be where they just queue the vehicles they're selling. So they take up these spaces in front.
But why, but how does the elimination of striping it make it, how does that make a difference? Why can't you just designate, why can't you stripe it and say, and, and put a sign up saying that they're only for the cars that you're going to?
Yeah, if they're not trying to.
Well, I know, but I just think it's weird that it's not striped. I think it makes, I, I mean, I, I don't want to step on his toes, but I mean, he's, but I'm just thinking, I'm thinking of Lancaster Street. I'm even thinking about the, I'm even thinking about the, the parking area right next to my office on Water Street. They're all, they're all striped and they're designated. And I agree with you, I think you have plenty of room. I mean Lancaster Street and Water Street, it's like half the, it's half the width. And people, I haven't seen one accident, I've been there for 23 years and I haven't seen one accident there. So I, I think you have plenty of room and I just, I think I'd rather see striping there because I think it.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's not, it's going to be, I think it's just more, it's going to just be more organized with, with, with the parking lines there than without them. I mean, I know you have those barriers, but I, I just don't understand, just, he says, oh, don't, don't stripe it and just make it for inventory parking while stripe it and still just make it for inventory, inventory parking.
And I certainly could.
Still going to have to have a handicap parking spot.
Yeah, that's why.
And that has to be designated, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, he has the same question.
Problem is out here, slope wise, you can't be ADA requirements and access to the lot. No, this is all, see, and access to the front door, the spots supposed to be located closest to the entrance. So this really is the only spot on the property that a handicap space would work.
The footprint of the building is the same though as the original building?
Yes.
The square footage and everything?
Yeah.
All right, well, I, I know the meeting isn't, the hearing isn't closed yet, but you, I mean, this is a huge improvement. You guys did a really nice thing.
Job. No, no, it looks good over there.
I think.
And it was, actually, it was a, let's see, it was, it's something drug busting, people dealing on.
Well, I know, once you clean something up, you clean it up to, literally and figuratively, so.
Right in the line between Pittsburgh and Lemester, so that, yeah.
I, I would just, I would just like to cease the striping. I mean, I know it's going to cost you a little bit more money, but it just looks weird to me.
That's not an issue. Because Pittsburgh has.
Yeah.
Thin lemons there, so.
Yeah.
It's not an issue with us.
Whether it's striped or not.
I think it should be striped, but I, the question, you know, then, then the.
See with the other department.
Then you need at least four, well, four or one for hand, so five spots. So that leaves you in.
Three, six, seven, 11.
Now, did your 1,200 include the garage?
No, it did not. It doesn't include the garage, so it's just the office space.
See, because that garage is going to require parking also.
You know, and I see that fire and police don't have a problem with the traffic issues and I think they would have said something about the parking.
What I'm saying is that garage, that, because you have to allocate, because you're going to have somebody working in there. So you're going to have somebody, you know, mechanic or something. So some of those, at least a couple of, you know, for a truck waiting. So you don't have 21. What I'm saying is I'm trying to get to a number for you, to a realistic number for, for your used cars.
Okay.
So, so, you know, you got the, the five in the front and then you got four, I'll say on the side, for lack of a, just, you know, that side or this side. Probably this side where you would have, you know, you got one, two, three, four here.
Does that name one of those spots for the garage?
Those are for the, so and you prob, and you got a couple, you got two in the back here.
Yeah.
So a couple of those for the garage and then these for your employees. So that leaves you with this side, four over here. You need your radiuses for turn and one, two, three, four, five, about nine, maybe 10 spots.
No, I counted the front of the building.
That's counting the front of the building. Because you'd get, you're not counting your handicap spot and you got one, two, three, four, five there. And then you got five, you got one, two, three, four here along that side for.
Yeah, so, so in total, minus the handicap, you got, that was five, six spaces. 22, so that leaves 16, 16 spaces.
Where's the entrance, this is the entrance to the garage here, right?
There's one there and then there's one up.
Up here, okay, I see that.
So we showed queuing in front of it, there was a space in front of it.
Yeah.
If they need to use it, they can move a car there.
So if you have 22 spots and you have four for employees, you probably got to figure two for the back garage.
Yeah, and then that's, that's around 1,000.
So that leaves you 16.
But that's not office space, that's 1,000 square feet in the garage.
But you still might have a garage back there.
Well, even if it's a couple of spaces for that, that's.
Is this gravelled back there?
Right, currently it is gravelled.
Okay, that's why you're showing us gravel.
Yeah, so we were proposing a new pavement, a new purpose. Like I said, no change to the surface conditions out yet. We're going to maintain them as they are and just put striping down.
So you got a couple of parking places back there, so is that where you queue your trucks? On the gravel area?
Currently, that's where dumpsters are stored.
Yeah.
There's a product box in the back that's incredible.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to the number. Okay, you know, it's a, it's a tight location and you got to have a dumpster someplace.
No, the dumpsters are, they got to be completely gone from there.
Well, for your own use.
You've got to talk to them every corner.
Yeah.
I'll have one of the guys just stop by and just throw the bag.
You're not going to have a dumpster for yourself?
No.
Does it leave one piece?
Yeah, we have a little one there.
So if you look at, if we need four for the office space and another couple for the garage, that's currently what I originally proposed here in the front, that's true. So we have six spaces there plus the handicap, so, or five plus the handicap. So if we take one of the other spaces, which gives us six plus the handicap, you know, that's seven spaces, 15 excess spaces on the property currently. So call them 15 spaces, our surplus.
Well, you're going to have to go in front of the license commission to get your used car license.
Yes, which.
Figure out how many cars you want to.
They'll, they'll, actually, we're trying to get you to a number that I think would work.
Okay.
Okay, because even when you're working, let's say the gravelled area in the back, your truck is going to, you know, it's, it's going to come in, it's going to sit there for a day or two while that's waiting to get parts or, who knows, you know, until it works. Or, or, you know, or one of the dumpsters is going to be repaired, welded or whatever. And so you're going to need that cumin area, so that's those couple of. I, I don't want to short you on the work, but I can see where you got the ones here, that those three here, you get these. There's five there, eight, nine, 10. Yeah, eight. Five, 13. Yeah, some places are off. It's a rough.
A rough number, but, yeah.
A rough number.
Could definitely work with that, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to.
No, I realize that, but I'm trying to help you.
No, absolutely, no, that's great.
To where, go, because trying to be realistically with you, you're still going to operate your business.
Right.
So we're not going to say you get, all of this is going to be parking, you're going to have used cars here because that's not going to work, okay? So we're trying to come up with a realistic number and I'm saying, yeah, probably around 15, 16 at the most. Be my rough guess.
I think, I think 15 is reasonable because you know that. You know, in a perfect scenario, they can all be tucked away in their designated spaces.
Right.
We still have, and we're showing one lane and one way out. So we're showing a loop circulation pattern where we maintain at its, at its tightest point. That's 14 and a half foot drive around the opposite of the building.
And, and all this is a question. Entertained any idea, well guaranteed, this is in Pittsburgh, some kind of a granite curb or something that would eliminate, you know, straight in parking and stuff like that? And, and backing out into, into Crawford?
No, it hasn't, certainly hasn't been discussed with them. That was the, the initial gun rule reaction from Pittsburgh was they thought this was a new development. They're like, we'll never give you a wide open curb cut from end to end. And I was like, we're not asking for that.
Yeah.
Please drive by and look at the site. It's a wide open cut that Guido's has improved and they paved the entire thing. They, they did some work to.
It was a flooding area, it was bad, you know.
Oh, yeah, I'm familiar with it. I went by there today again, you know. So I've seen the work that you've done, there's no question about your work. I'm just trying to, you know, but that's, again, that's Pittsburgh, so I don't want to, you know, Pittsburgh deal with their own thing. I got to have no problem with Lemester.
And we did approach Pittsburgh, so I mean, we talked about it.
Yeah, I see that.
And this was a compromise that we came to that they, they thought.
Yeah.
But I think, like you're saying, striping it and just designating it with signs and having the owner know that's what it's used for. Always doing the same thing as not striping it and parking the cars there.
Yeah.
So I, I think, unfortunately, you know, Mike's out on vacation, so I was trying to get through on Friday and today and trying to make sure they bought into it and they were fine with it. And I just didn't get that communication back today.
Okay. Good, I think we get enough information. Does the board have any more questions?
Yeah, and the second comment from the Board of Health.
Oh, I'm sorry, the second comment from the Board of Health.
We know there's only one O in Crawford.
Yeah, we fixed that.
I, I just, Chris Kenneth is so funny because he picks up on everything.
Well, it was kind of funny because I read this, the plans that called the board, the Board of Health. Appears there are two buildings, yes. Shrubs, trees selected by owner, question mark. Crawford has only one O and the contour lines disappear toward the rear lot. So, yes, we know these are some, those contain two structures. You know, so I just explained the top story is occupied by Guido's. Detached garage for vehicle maintenance, as we discussed. The shrubs and trees, it was so minimal, they don't have a landscaping architect to it.
No.
It's very small, you know, they can only fit so many shrubs in here, so we're, they're going to do it. They're going to upgrade it. Guido told me he loves landscaping, so.
Yeah, he's a landscaper by heart.
He loves, so, I've all the faith in the world's been done appropriately. Crawford Street, yes, I've corrected the spelling. About the contour data in the deck, the topography here that we have from the surveyor, I mean, this is the limit of it. There weren't any additional details in the back. If you drive up here, it levels out the whole backside.
Right.
And on top of that, really, this is just a striping plan, so the topography isn't really part of the whole development. So I didn't, I didn't want to go and get supplemental survey for the purposes of this plan.
Yeah. If it was a site plan, you require 50 feet outside the border. So, okay.
And that was it, those were the only questions.
Do I have any other questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Any further questions from the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Vote she carries. I'll tell you this story for a quick, I was looking for this address. I got to the Pittsburgh line and I said, wait a minute.
I've sent so many on Google Maps, you can't do it on, you like put it like that, it's off. And I've done it so many times and they still don't fix it.
Yeah.
Do you use Google, Google Maps or?
No, I knew where.
Oh, you knew where it was, but if you put it, if you plug it on the GPS.
Well, I'm going to look for the, the address, you know, I think, wait a minute.
And they just won't fix it, you know.
Getting that up, sure enough, I know. Okay.
So do we, yeah.
We'll be, it'll be up in a few minutes. We have one more public hearing.
Thank you.
6:50. Open public, public meeting for 109 North Main Street for site plan approval for Taco Stand.
Hi, my name is Jorge Padron and I tried to put a taqueria. It means taco place.
Taco place.
It's Taqueria El Amigo. I got one on Walton, so I'm looking to, I just moved to Lemester.
Okay.
So I'm looking to bring my tacos to this town.
Okay, very good.
So where is this?
This is the little jewelry place that's on the right hand of the side, just past.
The CBS?
No, 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 wait.
What, what about in North Main Street?
North Main, don't get mixed up with Main and North Main.
Just north of the intersection of Main and Main Street.
It was a little jewelry store, sits on the right hand side going out of town.
It's a dentist, it's a big girl.
On the right, on the Doyle Field side.
Before you get to Doyle Field.
Before you get to Doyle Field. It used to be a jewelry place.
Oh, yeah.
The side slot.
Okay.
Little building.
Little, little building.
Very little.
Okay.
Five, four and nine.
Oh, I know what you mean now. Yes, I've got it. You were trying to explain it to me, now I know.
Yeah. The salon is on the right, exactly.
Good spot for a taco place.
All right.
Yeah, we live in the Alps, okay.
Yeah, right across from the Alps, you're right.
Takeout food.
So, yeah, how many parking spaces do you have, sir?
Uh, we got, I.
He's only.
Well, another appears to be the issue.
And we got a handicap spot too.
He's got a good nine or 10 spaces there.
Yeah.
For the size of the building and it's takeout only.
Okay, oh, it's takeout only.
Yes, the field is on the, on the back.
Now, I was there today, you get, I see where the dumpster is on the back.
Yes.
Now, you show that edge of pavement, but that's really.
It's a bigger parking lot.
Yeah.
They just.
Well, right, that's a separate parcel, the dentist office is a separate parcel, but it's all paved and it's all a big curb cut, you know, it's a wide open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you show the snow storage?
It's one on the corner.
400 feet, which you require, two spaces?
For the snow.
One.
Yeah, one or two, and a handicap space.
The handicap appears to be the issue, right?
Handicap seems to be the issue.
We had some late discussion about the handicap space. So the building inspector pointed out that you need a van accessible handicap spot. We've, trying to figure out the best place for it. Initially, you'll see it kind of handwritten in on this plan. They're going to put it right near the front door on the, on the north side of the property. But if you look at it, there's a, there's a telephone pole right there with a guy wire. It's really, I think it would be kind of tough to maneuver in and out of there. There is also a parking space, an existing space on the side of the building. And I checked with Peter Nile today to see if that would be adequate for the space and he said that it would. So they're going to move their, the handicap spot to there on the side of the building. It's still close to the front door. Otherwise, we would have to go in the back of the lot, which is, which is a long, longer walk.
Is the front door handicap accessible?
It's not, it's not. We checked that as well. No, it depends on the amount of renovation that is being done in relation to the valuation of the building. And if it's 30% or more of the, of the actual valuation of the building. They're doing very little, I believe you did the flooring in there and then obviously adding kitchen equipment and a grease trap, under sink grease trap. So the building inspector didn't feel that that triggered making this, the changes to the front door because, plus there's no work being done on that area. If they were, if they were reworking the front door, then they would be required to make it accessible. But in this case, because they're not actually working with the door and it doesn't trigger that dollar value, they do not have to go and make that accessible. There is only, there's about one and a half steps. There's.
Yeah, so.
Did you print the picture? I don't know if I printed the picture, but it's pretty, yeah, it's like a. Did you print the picture? I don't know if I printed the picture, but it's pretty, yeah, it's like a.
Yeah.
All right, and it looks like, if I can, John, so we talked about building in the parking space and conservation approves. Kristen had her same comments about the parking space.
Yeah, there's plenty of parking on the back there.
Police, and then.
It's just a handicap.
Um, and, um.
Is it gonna be eaten at all? You're gonna have a couple tables in there to eat?
No, it's tall table.
No, it's a hall table.
I'll take on.
DPW, Kristen discussed with the grease trap. Um, and just the one thing from the Board of Health, they said they requested a sketch plan of the kitchen and food prep areas. Did you, do you know anything about them?
Jorge, I don't know anything about that, actually. Did you give the Board of Health a sketch of the kitchen?
Yeah.
The food prep area, okay, so that may have, they may have done that after the comments came in.
Okay.
And you worked with them on the grease trap and they, they allow, because it's so small, they can put one under sink in a three bay sink. As opposed to one in a row.
Kito, the grease traps have to be on the, on the bottom of that sink.
Yep.
Were, were you saying your other one was located?
Waltham.
Waltham, how big, is this one bigger or smaller than this, that one?
Uh, almost the same size.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. No, I think it's, uh, motion closed. Motion made and seconded to close. Oh yeah, audience. I got one person in the audience. She liked tacos. Okay, as long as we get samples, we're all set.
As long as they're under $50.
Yeah. Okay, uh, motion is closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay.
Hold on, I'll come right back.
They're voting in just a couple minutes yet.
Okay, I'll call our regular meeting. Call the auto.
Patrick Perlin.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Salvador Cipone. John Souza.
Yep.
Carol Vittorioso.
Here.
And Tom Scarry.
Okay. Do we have plans submitted, done?
Um, we have the, do you want to do the minutes?
Minutes.
Oh, minutes, yeah, all right. I'm trying to go fast.
Make a, make a motion acceptable.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a minute. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries. Plans submitted?
None.
None.
Nothing came in, okay. No old business. Okay, public hearings, City Council, taking 1118. Committee on, ordinance review. amend chapter 22 of the revised ordinance entitled zoning by amending section 22-14 adoption and amendment to require notification of a butter for zoning changes and costs associated were paid by the petitioner, by the petitioner. That's the planning board recommendation. In that thing, we had a number of issues, was to define the size of the, the impact area.
What I wrote down, and we can clarify this, is how does this cover large parcels of land?
Okay, lots of, okay.
Uh, so a definition
Mm-hmm.
of the parcel size.
Right.
How, how will it affect large parcel?
Yeah, affect it, yeah, because it would make, right now, it's wide open for, it could be a small parcel, it could be a large parcel.
Okay.
Typically, it's a larger parcel when you're getting, in most cases, a zoning change. Okay, exception of adding on to a zone, but typically, when you make a zoning change, you, you can't spot zone, so you have to encompass a larger area to make it viable to such an odd and spot zoning situation. Okay?
So, I mentioned that.
And we have, and then the costs.
Yeah, so my notes, I have asked the question of what, what do they intend to do regarding public entities and covering costs?
Right.
If they can make that language more specific, it's a little ambiguous.
Yeah, because, I mean, we have no budget if we, that would, yeah, they don't have a budget, so.
Right.
So, do we have to define to have a budget? Or, I don't know, because that, that really.
I don't know how you could budget for it.
Uh, no, it's something we could have.
You have no idea what it's gonna cost you.
Yeah, we kind of do that now, but again, it's kind of a shot in the dark, and then every year, you kind of look at what happened, but you might have 10 special permits this year and 20 next year, and you just can't.
Yeah, never know.
Yeah. Okay, I think those were the two issues. Anybody agree?
I, so I recommend approval of the proposed ordinance change, but with those two comments.
I second that.
Do we recommend approval upon clarification of these two?
It has to be clarification, I would agree with that.
Do we, wanna hear an answer first, if I'm, I'm not sure how to.
I'd like to see an answer before we approve it, because it would have to come back to us.
But the problem is now we closed the hearing.
Well, we closed the hearing, so.
That's why I asked that question originally. I don't think you can do that now.
No, we can, we, we can have another hearing.
We can re-up, have another hearing.
And we should just, I think that should seal.
Okay, I'll just raise it that way.
Just have it go back to them.
Concerns specifically X and Y and.
And, and then let them, uh.
If the answer's troubling, we can always send people back to you.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if they're gonna answer and provide some more information, we've already closed, like, we wouldn't introduce, reduce that here, so I think we're recommending it if they address these two issues.
Yep.
Okay.
Trying to figure out a word.
If we have, we'll figure it out.
Well, we gotta figure it out now, but we gotta.
Well, I, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't, it's, it's their, it's their city council petition, right? It's our recommendation.
Oh, we're doing his recommendation, that doesn't require.
It, it just has to do with notification for zone changes and, and the cost associated with. I, I mean, my, my issue was, if they, I'll be honest with you, if they come back and say, when the petition, when the petitioner's a public entity, such notification procedure should be submitted, I, I just think it's too broad. If they come back and make it specific, I, I, I'm not going to have an issue as to how specific it is, because it's going to apply to every department in the city of Leominster. So, it's, it's not gonna be specific to, if it was specific to the planning board, then I'd be a little bit more concerned. And, and it's the same thing within terms of defining the, the size, I mean. Because the other thing is, they could just completely disregard what we're requesting.
I was kind of wondering what our batting average has been with our recommendations.
Well, the other, the other thing that we can do is, you brought up the point about the hearing being closed, okay? On Robert's rules, I think, we could reopen the hearing tonight. But anybody on the prevailing side that voted could make a motion to open the hearing and continue it until we have an answer from the planning board, and that would suffice, okay? And that, we could do that legally. So that would, so even though we closed it, at this point, we could make a motion to reopen, somebody has, we all voted for it, so somebody that voted on the prevailing side can take, to reopening it, because we're not taking, we haven't taken in any more information. And that's the key thing with opening.
Right.
Okay, so as long as, if we had taken in some other information since that time, we couldn't do it, but we haven't.
Okay, um, I was just thinking also, this is a recommendation, you could be recommending that they clarify those two.
Right.
Areas of issue, and that's the recommendation, and that there's not an issue, that you have no issue with the rest of it. Just trying to figure out a way.
And we could do it that way too.
That's the best, good action.
Yeah, here's the recommendation, clean these areas up, and then if they, and if they come in with some major changes, then they've got to come, resubmit it to us.
If they have changes, resubmit it and we'll have another hearing.
I think that's the way to go.
Okay. I'm just trying to give options, you know, that would be, that would work.
We still have a motion on the table, so.
Okay, good.
Unless they want to withdraw that, we'll do this other one.
Yeah.
So, maybe recommending.
We're recommending those, the clarification on those areas.
Is that okay with the proposers?
It's the same thing to me, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, 269 Crawford Street, site plan approval. I think.
Ready to vote?
Yeah, I, I think the site itself is fine, I went over there today. I don't see where a sidewalk would be required, not that much.
We've discussed.
I think the definition of what we might want to do is in this, I'm not sure if we want to or not, but we could make a recommendation, uh, that the used car lot be 15. Okay, 15 cars, and that would, uh, and if they want to change it, then we have to come back to us for that. But that's also up to the license commission. But that also gives the license commission some, some feeling, because they're not, they're not planners and they don't really understand, you know, all the layout sometimes, so, might give them assistance, and that's all I'm trying to do.
Right, absolutely. And they definitely, this whole site plan, plan process, they've used it in more car lots to try and help them decide how many cars they should be giving a license for, how many can actually fit on the lot, because we're, they can stripe it to a size that is a legal parking space, and so that gives it, make it very clear how many spaces you can have on the car lot. So, I think, um, and we're gonna get an updated plan, I have an older copy here, but they do have the parking, the parking requirements listed on here. If, if, they can add in the spaces that they're gonna require for the garage in the back, probably two, I went and looked, um, real quick.
Yeah, because they didn't include the garage in the back.
I just checked, like, real quick on their motor vehicle service station or body shop, it's two per bay. I think there's only the one bay left, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's two bays.
There's two, there's a side bay.
There's two, so that'd be.
Actually, two garages.
There's a side garage and a front garage.
Yeah, there's an entrance to a garage on the side, and then there's one straight ahead.
Because I saw in the renovation, that, that garage on the building is not there any longer.
No, this is on the garage building itself.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm going by this.
There's one straight ahead, and then there's one, there's one if you go up the right side of the building, it's only going that way.
Okay.
Well, you could, again, I don't know if it's a body shop or if it's just a garage, so I don't know if that would benefit.
He, he shows us a door. There's a door here and a door here.
That's going on the picture, yeah.
Yeah, on, not on the picture, but on the, the drawing for here, so he's showing two bays. No, the house is down here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, wrong too.
So the house is down here, the house is here, the garage is up there.
Well, we.
There's a door here and there's a door here, so that's two bays.
One's upper, one's lower, practically.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could have him update the parking table on here to include that, and then, for this, for the license commission, it's clear they need core spaces for employee parking plus whatever for the garage base, six, so call it six bases, and they have 22, that leaves them.
16, so 15 is a most.
15 or, yeah, so they, at least the information's on the plan, which they would use, um, you know, that.
Okay.
I, I don't.
Yeah, as long as they know that, that, you know, the garage, it gets a little different, because you've got a working garage and.
Yes.
You know, so there's sort of combined on the book.
So we can clarify how many spaces they do need to designate for the garage, for the employee parking for the garage, and then, so that plus the four, 22 minus that should be for inventory, or could be for inventory.
Right.
If they put 15 cars in a lot, it's gonna stuff like a, like a muller.
Yeah, it'd be really tight.
A small little lot, but we don't want to work through it.
Perhaps they're dealing in Priuses.
I don't know.
Okay.
So I, make a motion to approve with, um, well, we're not really going with the conditions of the, I guess the conditions of the Board of Health, right?
I think Brian addressed what he could from those.
All right, so I make a motion, I make a motion to approve with the conditions that John and, John outlined.
That's a recommendation.
Right, that's a recommendation, the licensing that they.
That building didn't have sort, didn't have.
That they limited to 15 spots.
Spent a lot.
And I'll tell you, if I were on the licensing commission, I wouldn't be happy with that, but I guess it's just a recommendation. You don't want to encroach upon their.
No, no, no.
Jurisdiction, right.
But I think it's the, it's on the plan as it is right now. They're showing all kinds of plots up the front.
They can decide how many.
You know, but they're showing the, the garage we use. They didn't qualify for the, the, they didn't qualify the garage spaces or the, the two bays where it requires four space, bases.
Would you want a condition to require them to update the parking table on, on the site plan, okay? So, let's say.
So that we. And I think if we update the parking table and define the use, the parking for the garage, then that becomes self, that becomes self-evident to the license commission.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, because then it will be all right on the plan.
Right. Okay.
Second, boy, that's a fast two hours, it's only the 70.
Yeah.
They didn't fix that clock.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a motion.
And second.
We have motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Here are none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries. Uh, 109 North Main Street, site plan approval for a taco stand.
I make a motion to approve with the, um, condition of putting the handicap spot in the right spot.
On the right hand side, on the right hand side of the building.
On the right side. Second.
Now, that doesn't require, because if he, he parallels that to the building, he doesn't need the, uh, the ramp.
Oh, the ramp.
The ramp side.
There's a lot of people like.
So normally with the van space, there's the hatch area to the side, so his, that area would be the open area in the back. Not clear to me if they need to paint that or not. I don't think they do, because it's not, it's to prevent other people from parking there.
Right, right.
So, it's not really, there isn't another space next to that handicap spot, it just.
No, it's, it's the driveway, really. I think if they just, if they painted it. Okay. Do we have any other discussion? When are you gonna open?
Soon.
Soon.
As soon as this meeting is over, so we can get started.
We can get the equipment, right?
He's hungry, I'm.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Communications. City Council petition 13-18. Pat Scorselli as agent for Highland Manor Realty Trust accepted deed for Katie Lane, and request the street be taken by eminent domain by the city of Leominster. Petitioner officer pay legal fees that may be incurred, the planning board's recommendation. Uh, this has to be referred to the DPW, and we gotta get the input from them.
Yes.
And we gotta make sure that is, if we've done, this also requires the as-built drawings complete.
So, I tried to get some information, I'm sure this was a contentious situation years ago, and so I tried to get up to speed on it. Um, I did talk to DPW, um, he, John Rosemary did say that the road is basically complete, um, the problem is the fee in the road, so the butter's on it, it's not retained by the, it wasn't retained by the developer. Um, there was a question of the streetlights, whether they were installed and/or working. Um, I did go check, this, one street light, it is installed, and I don't actually have a, um, I couldn't find a, a, one of the original subdivision plans that work, or I have a draft as-built plan, um, but, um, there is one street light down the end of the circle, so it could be the only one. I didn't see any other bases or anything that wasn't installed. Whether it's working or not, I'm not sure. We have to check with Joe Forya, but it's.
One doesn't seem like that's enough of the, that's, that right.
I was a little surprised, but it's 580 feet long. Katie Lane is off of.
Katie Lane is off of, off of Lincoln Hill, and it drops down the hill.
Yeah.
And then some of the houses drop down off of that.
Yeah, it's.
There's a water drainage problem and.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, well, my understanding, a lot of that was, or all of it, was taken care of over, over time. There was some pictures, I saw the pictures, there was some horrible stuff. Um, but that's all been addressed, is my understanding. Um, DPW's been really busy, so I wasn't able to get further clarification, but he did say that the road has been completed. They are waiting on the as-bills, so there's draft as-bills, but they haven't been finalized.
Yeah.
Well, I just don't understand why they're filing a petition for eminent, to me, it sounds like a street acceptance, and.
Why isn't it just a street?
Well, and.
Because they need eminent domain, because, as I understand it, is the people own the street and not the contractor, so he doesn't have a deed to the street.
What is it, what's that deed I'm looking at?
It's deeds.
I, I, I don't get it. I still don't get it. I don't get it, because eminent, eminent domain is when a government entity takes private property for a legitimate public purpose.
Right.
And I don't, it doesn't even fall with, it doesn't even, it doesn't even fall within that definition. And then, then, and the legal entity, the, the government, the governmental entity has to pay the owner of the land, the private owner of the lands, of the value of what they're taking, and so it doesn't, it, why can't it just be a street acceptance? And so it doesn't, it, why can't it just be a street acceptance?
Good question.
Don't know a ton about this, but each, each homeowner would need to sign off, and there would be, uh, it would be, it would affect their deed, it would change their deed, it would affect their mortgage and documentation like that. Also, this, this may be some misunderstanding on the part of the homeowners as to what this process is and what it's about. I know it wasn't this street, but it was a similar one, where everyone was ready to sign off on the, you know, it was a similar situation of ownership, and everyone was ready to sign off except one or two, um, homeowners who were concerned, maybe from a lack of trust in the process, but that by signing off on something, they were, um, committing themselves to something else, and taxes would go up and, and all those things, they were, they do trust.
Well, I think they're, because that's another thing, does the petitioner even have standing? Because who is the, who is the owner of the property that they want the city to take? Who's the owner of the property?
It sounds like the homeowners, the association.
I believe it's the homeowners, yeah.
Well, if it's the homeowners.
They own to the center line.
They're not even the petitioner. And I don't know how one, I've never, I've just, and I don't know enough about it, but I don't know how the, but from my limited understanding of eminent domain, I don't understand how a homeowner, if it's possible for a, for, for the, for the private property owner to request eminent domain. Come take my land, because it's usually without your consent too, because, so I don't know how eminent domain can be consensual.
This is the homeowners association, they shouldn't stand.
So I, I'm just, I don't, I mean, it doesn't require a public hearing, this is just, is a recommendation, I, I make a motion that we don't,
No, we can't take any action until we get the as-bills anyway.
I don't think, but I think that's, I think the as-bills are, I don't, I think they are irrelevant, because I think the whole point is that I don't know how you can request eminent domain when, and also, what's, how, what's going to happen? Is the, does that mean that the city then has to pay the property owner for taking the property? And also, the second question is, who has standing, who owns the property? Even if, if that question even has to be answered, because I don't think eminent domain is the proper vehicle here for the city. In my opinion, something's being circumvented, because something hasn't been completed. I don't understand why this isn't a straight street acceptance. So with that, so I make, people can do what they want, I'm making a motion that the, that the, that we recommend that it, that it cannot be taken by eminent domain, that to us, it should be a street acceptance. And I, you know, frankly, I hope I'm wrong, but I want somebody to come back from the city council or someone else and, and tell me I am wrong. But that's my, that's my recommendation.
Um, the petitioner is Pat Scarselli on behalf of Highland Manor Realty Trust, and he, we did send him the agenda, let him know. I was kind of hoping he'd show up and, you know, explain how this is supposed to work, but.
Surprised, I am.
I am surprised, and I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he does a good job when he explains something, but I'm, what I'm looking at, I don't, I don't see how it's, from the limited research I did on eminent domain today, it doesn't even make sense to me.
It looks like Scott Nibrowski did the legal review.
Yeah.
For what that's worth.
Yeah. Well, Nibrowski shouldn't.
He should.
I mean, but he just prepared a deed, that has nothing to do with the eminent, and that's another thing, I mean.
Well, if they have the, if they need the eminent domain, I guess it's all.
I mean, why don't they just? Yeah, I mean, well, if you look at Pat's app, if you look at his petition to the city council, he's asking for both.
Accept the deed and, how is it worded? Accept the deed for Katie Lane and request the street be taken by eminent domain. And again, that's probably his.
But you can't take it by eminent domain.
We have a motion on four.
I've never seen that requested.
That's right.
Because usually the property is held by the contractor. And it's a deed for the roadway. And then they take and they release the deed to the city with the, uh, until the street gets accepted.
Now, we have a motion and second, hold on. Patrick Stein, we're ready to vote.
Well, we, we'll wait for input from.
Well, I'm just gonna, this is, this is the actual application to the city council, I think it might help to understand and word it. Accept the deed for a way, instead of notice Katie Lane, said roadway being a way on a plan entitled Legged Place Definitive Subdivision Plan, the petitioner also requests that the way be taken by eminent domain by the city of Leominster for the for the benefit of the current landowners, so it's not to create a.
Financial hardship.
Financial hardship for those.
Individuals.
Individuals. Oh, you're good at reading. The petitions also off, the petitioner also offers to pay the legal fees that may be incurred by the city of Leominster to accomplish this task on further consideration for the acceptance of this.
Well, that's why, is it an acceptance or is it eminent domain?
Your question.
I mean, if it's just a street acceptance, then they'll just go through the, let's go through what we have to go through to determine if it can be accepted. So maybe that, maybe I'll revise my motion, saying, I, I don't recommend that the city take the street by eminent domain, but will consider a street acceptance.
Okay, upon, uh, you know, receipt of a stamped as-built drawing and written acceptance from the DPW.
Okay, let me get the stamp.
So I think that kind of merges my thought with John's thought, actually.
Regular street acceptance.
No, but on a street acceptance.
With stamped.
No, that's what he needed it.
With stamped and written.
Well, maybe.
So if a street's accepted, the city owns, actually, can be the.
I guess my question is, why is the street any different than any other street in the city of Leominster?
And.
Alright, motion on four.
Who knows?
So can I reread this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, that we don't recommend taking the street by eminent domain, but would consider of the regular street acceptance with a stamped as-built and written approval from the DPW.
Sounds like, good to me. Okay, I have a motion, and a second. Okay, any further discussion on that?
No.
Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries. Define subdivision bond release for Sawtelle Road Extension.
So Sawtelle Road Extension is a subdivision, uh, it's about halfway down Sawtelle Road, a six lot subdivision. This was Anthony Cleese, he couldn't make it tonight, so I'm gonna speak on his behalf. Um, they did, they did, they're requesting a bond reduction or lease, and they also sort of simultaneously are, um, petitioning for a street acceptance through the city council. So that is our requirement in the subdivision regs for them to petition for street acceptance. So they're doing that right now. They have their as-bills, they've given them to DPW, DPW's been over it with them, they're fine with it. Um, they do need to just clarify that the streetlights, that was the only thing that was hanging, hanging out there. Um, I drove by today, there is one streetlight, I think I see one streetlight on the plan. Um, but there is one there that's installed. Um, and otherwise, everything else has been completed for the DPW.
Yeah, that's, alright, that process works well now.
That's the way to do it, yeah.
That, okay, and I also went up through that today, so.
Yeah, the street trees are in, the sidewalks in.
All good.
It looks good.
Alright, so I move to, um, approve the, uh, bond release for Sawtelle Road Extension.
Motion made and seconded to approve Sawtelle definitive subdivision bond release. Any further discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no, motion carries. Uh, director's report? Second session, then.